Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, November fifteenth City Council meeting. Uh, clerk, can you please call the roll?
Alderman Santee?
Here.
Alderman Glad?
Here.
Alderman McClatchy?
Here.
Alderman Harding?
Here.
Alderman Strack?
Here.
Alderman Devine?
Here.
Alderman Miller?
Please stand before the court. Flagellations.
The United States of America, the two republics which stands one nation under God, individual with the release and trust as federal.
First item on the agenda is public comment. Uh, this public comment portion is for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Uh, so if you'd like to come up to the podium, please state your name, your address for public record. Uh, we have, uh, Kenneth Gill on the sheet here. Would you like to come up and speak? Thank you, sir.
I'm not sure exactly why I'm here. I was sort of invited.
Okay.
Received a text from a reporter. I was front page in the Northwest Herald this morning. Um, I'm facing a section fifteen deconversion sale of my company. Basically, I'm being forced to sell my own under a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent majority type rule. And the document that I was presenting, the only document I was presenting from, I'll just say a state agency in this case, it would be Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation. It mentions in there the basic process, and that also I'm entitled to reasonable relocation costs. When I asked the individuals, um, proposing this acquisition, they would not answer or define what that was, which led me on a quest on the internet. And what I discovered is it's way beyond two men and a truck. I've attempted to secure these benefits with the proper forms, requests, letters and emails, and all of them have been basically ignored. Now I'm being sued by the people doing this for not signing their papers. Papers which I should save clearly in front of everybody, yet errors in them, specifically the one that maybe just stopped reading them. These are written for something that happened in Forest Park, Illinois. I don't live in Forest Park, Illinois. I live in McHenry. I've asked these lawyers to correct those documents, resend them, so I may continue reading them and look for more errors, all the time requesting that they comply with the reasonable relocation costs that I'm clearly entitled to as stated in the document presented to me, but supposedly allows them to do this to me. I can't get an answer from the IDFPR. I can't get an answer from any agency. HUD is responsible on the federal side, but the rules that determine this, it's part of the URA, the Uniform Reciprocal, or excuse me, Uniform Relocation Assistance Act. I'm trying to follow the rules. I'm trying to cooperate, but I'm getting sued for not cooperating. And I need help. Nobody seems to have any authority over this. There's no proper reporting mechanism. I can't just email. I spoke to the chief of police. I filed a police report because I believe portions of this are questionable. There are questions in conflict of interest. We do share a responsibility of the condominium association to its members and owners. None of my questions have been answered by anybody, and I'm sitting here in Regal Lindroland for six months. I've ordered three payoff letters trying to facilitate this process. They're all outdated now. Nobody has any answers, and I'm gonna end up in court, and that's okay with me. But I've tried. I've contacted all the current agencies. Everybody says this is a civil matter. Well, I have reason to suspect it's more than that. And that's why I'm here today, because, uh, excuse me now, Alderman. You, sir?
Yes.
I received a text from Sam Moundsbury at the Northwest Herald saying you'd like to speak with me, and that it would be a good idea I could tell him to hear. I see only reason I'm here, in case anybody has questions about why I am on the front page in this city's newspaper. That's all.
Can I talk you up to the meeting?
Absolutely, sir. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it, sir. Would anyone else like to speak on behalf of public comment? Sir? Please state your name and address for public right.
Uh, hi, I'm Caleb Resner. Uh, I'm, I live in thirty-two oh six Terrace Drive in McHenry, and, um, I'm, uh, pursuing my Eagle project, and I'm building a fifty-foot round pin for May State Therapie Farms, and I have to raise fifteen hundred dollars in order to fund the project. I just wanted to, um, ask anyone if, anyone if they would be willing to public site of the project in order to help me pursue the rank of Eagle and, um, benefit the organization. Uh, the organization is May State Therapie Farms. They're in Ringwood. I don't know if any of you are familiar with them, but, um, that is my Eagle project, and I have all the blueprints. I have it approved by the council, and, uh, I was just, I just wanted to say that, yeah.
Do you have, do you have a blueprint with you?
Um, yeah. Uh, I have the blueprint right here, actually. I also have a reference because people have done this in the past. They've built these things. It's portable, so you can take it down instead of back up.
Yeah, I don't want. Okay. That's how, that's how we have a meeting.
This is a round pin for, um,
Okay.
It's, uh, therapeutic services for people with, um, post-traumatic trauma and, uh, just plenty of things like autism and such. I've heard a lot of things, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I have a GoFundMe page set up. I have all, uh, pictures and descriptions in there. If you guys are willing to post like a link on Facebook or something, just to publicize the project.
Why don't we make it easier for you? Sean Strack and I will go ahead and raise the money for you, so.
All right, thank you.
Um, the money will be raised on a Twitter chat.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate you. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, yeah.
I can mention them. Thank you. Phil, I think you have my number. Uh, go ahead and, mom or somebody, I have my number at the top.
Uh, I don't have, that's why when you're originally, I wasn't actually getting out there. I just kind of was like, whatever, I'll just go there.
All right, yeah, go ahead and, uh, I'll give you my, my number after the meeting.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Um, all right. Any other public comment? See none? All right, Derek.
Yeah, just real quick, uh, just to clean up. Sorry about that. This is a reminder, we can take our masks down too when you're talking in the microphone, because you just make it all clear. Uh, just a clarification for tonight's agenda, the last item on here, which is the scope of services discussion for the municipal refuse online services. Uh, it was a discussion that, uh, Public Works Director Strange was gonna leave tonight, but he had a family, uh, lead it tonight. He had a family emergency, and, uh, we wanna make sure that he's able to be here to lead that discussion for council, so it will be rescheduled for the next council meeting, which is Monday, December sixth, so that will be part of the discussion tonight, is all I have.
Thank you. All right, and we'll go ahead and move forward with the update, uh, from the Retail Coach, on the state of retail market in McHenry.
Economic Development Director, um, Director Martin, go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, about six months ago, the city retained the Retail Coach, national retail consulting, market research and development firm that combines strategy, technology and expertise development to deliver high-impact retail recruitment and development strategies. Um, they previously had, um, conducted our, our trade area analysis for us as well and updated this information as part of this process, as well as other demographic and socioeconomic information. And, um, a couple other skills that they have that I find, and anybody who's dealt with retail would know, that, um, our region relationships, very important, um, skills that they have and have shown throughout this process. They're here, and the Retail Coach will, presentation will provide an update of their analysis today, and the presentation on state of retail in McHenry, and, um, I'd like to turn over to, uh, Kyle Cofer from the Retail Coach.
All right, Kyle, you're up.
Hey, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman, thank you for the, uh, introduction, and, um, you know, I'm happy to be here.
Wait a minute, Kyle.
I've viewed this in the past, but, um, you know, I'm kinda worried to put an emphasis on it because in 2021, data is extremely important to retailers and restaurants. It's kind of the base foundation, um, you might say, of what we can do, and, you know, different retailers and restaurants kind of look at different data points. So, um, for the Olive Garden you have in town, Olive Garden looks at nothing. Chick-fil-A looks at another thing. Great, you can't look at another thing. So, all of these retailers and restaurants look at different things. So, um, you know, kind of when we start providing data, what we start with is, is really the cell phone analysis, which allows us to gather, um, you know, other data as well. So, we're actually able to go in and draw a polygon around specific areas in town, um, and really see where consumers are coming from based on their home location. Um, so if, I assume everybody that's attended tonight has one, if not two, cell phones. Um, you know, chances are, one of those apps you have on your phone is, is viewing your location, and that's how this works. It, it shows us, um, you know, where these consumers are coming from to shop in McHenry on a regular basis, based on, um, you know, where that home location is. So, um, for this example, I wanted to show the shops at Fox River cell phone analysis, and this is looking at roughly the past twelve months, um, from earlier, uh, last week, I believe. So, we ran this extremely recently, um, and we're able to see there's an estimated number of three hundred forty-six point eight thousand customers making two-point three four million visits over that time period, over that past twelve months. And like I said, this is specifically for, um, the shops at, uh, Fox River, we've heard mentioned. We also run this on, um, you know, other locations in town, and, you know, this helps us realize who's coming as well as we can use this as a marketing tool in our recruitment matters. Um, and then kind of building on that, we're able to see where these consumers' favorite places are. So, like I said, those consumers that are shopping at the Fox, or the shops at Fox River, nowhere else do they go. If they're going to Walmart, they're going to, um, twenty-five, twenty-five Richmond Road, um, O'Hare International Airport is also on the top. So, it gives us a little bit deeper information on, on, you know, these consumers, where else they're going, um, outside of just shops at Fox River. We're also able to see customer journey. Um, so the darker red is, is kind of the highest concentrated roadways that these shoppers take to come to the, uh, the shops at Fox River. Um, you know, in, in, in some communities that lets them know, um, you know, maybe where they should look for some form of new development and, and, and do those types of things. Then we're also able to see what I call, um, the spider map. Um, so think of the shops at Fox River, kind of the base blue, um, body of the spider there, let's show where consumers go prior and post-activated that, um, that specific shopping center. So, sixty-two point, uh, or sixty-two percent come from their home to the shop, uh, the shops at Fox River, and sixty-one point two percent go directly home after. And, you know, I'll tell you, this is, this is consistent with what we see kind of throughout the country, right? And that is, you know, home and home is, is often times that, that highest percentage of, of prior posted. Um, and then to build on that, right, we see, I believe, that it's so, you know, pretty consistent, um, does it turn out from twelve P M. to six P M. So, um, that's very good to see there throughout the day. A lot of people, um, you know, are visiting this shopping center. Um, and then daily business. So, Saturday is, is, is obviously kind of your highest day there that you can see. Um, and, and that's consistent with what we see, um, with similar shopping centers throughout the country. It's, you know, Saturday being kind of that, um, you know, that main shopping day along with, with Friday and Saturday. So, that's kind of cool to see there, and then also length of stay. So, the average, um, customer that comes is, is, is spending, um, you know, fifty-one minutes. Um, now, this is my favorite graph to see because there's nobody to really, um, or allow individuals that are actually working there on a regular basis. Um, but in our recruitment effort, you know, this is something that we throw in there, that we send to retailers and restaurants, whether, um, they're looking to open a location, you know, in the center, or maybe a ad hoc opportunity. So, like I said, this is the type of stuff we use in our marketing efforts. Um, and then probably my favorite, um, portion of, of, of the mobile analysis is, is really the Cisco right now. So, over the past twelve months, um, this kind of rates out based on percentage of, of Cisco, where these consumers are coming from to shop at, um, the shops at Fox River. So, um, you know, roughly nineteen point zero six percent of, of, of the, um, the customers over the past twelve months had a McHenry Cisco. So, you know, that shows us that McHenry is a regional hardware, that they're pulling a lot of consumers from, um, you know, all over the surrounding areas, and, and that's really what we base off, um, we base our data off of, is, is the retail trade area, which I'll package it to broadly. Um, but just to prove that, this is what, um, this is what we call our heat map. So, this is looking directly at, at the shops at Fox River over the past twelve months, um, showing individuals that have made one or more visits. So, just about everybody that is, that, this kind of shows where their home location is. So, the darker red is the higher concentration, and the darker blue is, you know, lower concentration areas where people may, you know, might have just come one time. But, you know, that darker red is where you see kind of your highest concentration of consumers coming over the past twelve months. And, and what's key for us when we look at this is, is, is we wanna know who that ranking customer is. So, we look at, you know, roughly three to four visits of, 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 of consumers when we're kind of determining what, what our retail trade area is. So, um, you know, you can see that the shops at Fox River is, is, is really pulling kind of from all over the region of, of consumers who are visiting to shop over the past twelve months. Um, and this is kind of all, like I said, this is kind of our base foundation for ultimately determining a retail trade area, uh, which is where we kind of run the majority of our reports on. So, we went in, um, into this as kind of your primary retail trade area, where you're pulling, um, customers from, you know, on a regular basis to shop, to eat in McHenry. Um, and, and, and like I said, this is what we run our reports on. If, if we were marking McHenry just based on your community population, um, you know, think back at that heat map I showed you, we would be doing you a major disservice. So, we run our reports on this outlined area, which we have determined is your primary retail trade area, and that's what we use to market to retailers and restaurants, um, really to tell McHenry stories in the most accurate way possible. Um, and as a company, we're, um, extremely conservative with the way we draw these. Um, the last thing we want is, um, for McHenry to get a bad reputation of, of, of going out and, and, and marking a trade area that's not accurate, as well as, you know, the Retail Coach is a company I work for, getting a bad reputation. Um, so we spent a lot of time on this retail trade area, looking at, you know, numerous locations from the cell phone analysis, and this is kind of what we determine, um, is that primary retail trade area, and we're, um, you know, um, extremely happy with what, uh, without this turnout. And this is kind of what we consider a retail market protocol. So, you know, George and Doug can, can kind of back this up. We have tons of pages of data, so I will go at, you know, roughly fifteen to twenty minutes to go over this, and, and, and we could go over some of the data we have for, you know, an hour and a half or two hours. So, I kind of wanted to hit the hot points. So, you know, we call this our retail market protocol. It kind of hits the hot points of what retailers and restaurants want to see. We don't want to send them twenty-five pages of data on the front end because they're gonna open up that PDF, and they're gonna be like, well, I'm not gonna take the time to look at all of this. So, we have everything broken down within the hot points of, of, of what they want to see. So, um, that twenty-twenty-one population came out to be, um, two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven. Like I said, this is all within this, um, primary retail trade area, which is shown on the top right. All of this, all these reports are coming from that. Um, the average household income is, you know, right at a hundred-thousand-ninety-nine, um, thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-four. Um, educational attainment, something that, that retailers and restaurants also want to look at. They want to look at grade distribution. They want to look at age. So, um, you know, these numbers are great for recruiting, you know, get you in, in, in that threshold of, of, of kind of the next level, um, sit down for retailers and restaurants, which I know everybody is, in McHenry is, is, is interested in. Um, so this is kind of all, like I said, our base foundation, you know, we, we, we compile the reports, and now we are on our recruitment base. Um, and I'll kind of get started on, on, on that recruitment. So, um, you'll notice in here, I did mention some names. Um, you know, we'd like to kind of keep this, um, you know, somewhat close to heart because a lot of times, you know, going out and, and, and rumors can start. So, um, you know, some, some names I mentioned, sometimes I didn't mention names, but, you know, this is, this is kind of our bread butter. This is what we do on the recruitment side. So, um, you know, kind of wanted to give y'all a quick update of, of, of where we stand with some of these prospects. Um, you know, Caribou Coffee got back with us. They're not curtain looking for sites in Illinois. Um, Chick-fil-A, they said McHenry is a lower priority at the moment, um, but they didn't say that. So, often times when we're recruiting, um, for communities throughout the country, Chick-fil-A is kind of, you know, what flat, no, there's, there's no offering Chick-fil-A looks, you know, three, four years, um, ahead for, um, for locations and those type things. So, they said not at the moment, and, you know, I, I take that as a positive, um, just knowing kind of how they operate, and, and, you know, usually the feedback we get from these, uh, from some of their brokers. Um, White Castle, thanks for checking in. We're not interested, interested in having any, like, in, in a location in McHenry at this time. Um, James's Deli, they're not expanding that kind of, uh, nationwide at the moment. They're even been closing a few stores. They were hit extremely hard by COVID when, when they weren't able to open up their, um, their salad bar for, for quite some time. That hurt them extremely hard. Um, Grisley Crewe in McHenry is an historic market. Grisley Crewe is this time. Um, Blaine Pizza, thanks for the information. McHenry is not an RME expansion strategy. Um, and then Tractor's, well, I kind of sent one or two of the others that listed here. Um, you know, thanks for reaching out. McHenry is currently on a write-off for its management. So, I kind of put all that they've been letting on the front end, and so I'll kind of get some of the more positive stuff here, um, on their recruitment side from, from what we've seen. So, I've been working with the locals, you know, kind of local retail breakfast concept, um, for the past, you know, few months, and then, you know, several stages of data, kind of walk in through some of that. And they're currently looking for some four thousand, um, square feet downtown, um, for breakfast concept. Um, I've been working closely with George and Doug. They kind of have a pulse on everything, um, that's going on downtown, as well as, you know, throughout the community. They've done a great job of passing the available sites here and there when things come on the market, and just kind of brainstorming on that. But, you know, this local, um, breakfast concept is looking for four thousand, um, square feet downtown. We've set down, you know, kind of some other locations outside of downtown, but they're kind of settled right now. Um, you know, a national chicken restaurant, um, that I think everybody would be extremely happy with, um, you know, they said not right now, but let's stay in touch when they will get to the market. Um, that's extremely good feedback from this particular national, um, chicken restaurant. Um, so, you know, we're gonna continue to stay in touch with those guys and, and, and check in every few months, continue to pass them along sites, um, because a lot of times, the perfect site can speed up, um, this process a lot. That's, that's for regional and national brands. So, we get a knock right now, um, you know, we still keep that on our list, and then it's, it's George and Doug have beat up sites. We continue to send those out to the retailers and restaurants that we know they're in. Um, a national, uh, deli, they said the rights of the McHenry market have been owned by the same franchisee for quite some time. They're saw that the market might be taken back by corporate because the franchisee has decided to develop, um, the retail coaches that's on both the sites in town at the park. So, we see this often times where, um, you know, specific franchisees are required to, um, you know, open up a certain amount of stores over, over a certain amount of time, and if they don't do that, sometimes corporate takes back the market and will, you know, kind of shop that around with the different franchisees. Um, so that's, that's what's kind of in the works here. Um, we would rather that not happen, um, because that just kind of pushes things back further often times. So, you know, we're trying to keep in touch with the broker there and, and, and kind persuade him with, with sites to kind of hopefully speed up the current franchisee that's in the process of, of, of currently on the rise of the market. Um, National Lea Concept, uh, there's an active franchisee in place in McHenry currently. Um, we sit handles whole sites, and we also pass along, um, sites to little holes. So, I'll kind of talk a little bit about him, um, but, um, he, he, he's kind of been, he's charged in McHenry Plaza. We've been working extremely closely, um, you know, to try to fill up some of that space that, that's available in that shopping center. Um, a National Sandwich Concept, TRD has that site currently waiting here if there's a franchisee in place. Um, I will tell y'all, I haven't before we've done this, but, um, I had a call with, um, my third franchise, um, which is individual that, you know, puts franchisees with possible locations, helps, helps individuals go through the franchisee process. Um, you'll notice around, you know, a, a, a few more concepts I talked about. There's no franchisee in place. Um, and also times that kind of where the deal goes back a little bit. So, we, we, I'm, I'm gonna kind of work with this individual here, hopefully, um, see if he has some individuals in, in, in Illinois that might be interested in, in, in becoming a franchisee. So, I wanted to mention that there. Um, and even, you know, I mentioned McHenry Plaza, um, would have been really, sort of close to will to help build, um, some of his vacancies in McHenry Plaza. Um, I've run some specific cell phone studies for him, just kind of showing what, um, that specific center looked like during COVID times, what, what those numbers look like now. He's kind of blown away with some of that. They haven't, um, it just, you know, they have done a great job of, you know, producing more requires and those type things. So, I've kind of put some stuff together for him to kind of, um, you know, to help market, um, to retailers and restaurants. And, and like I said earlier, they even passed some concepts his way. Um, moving forward to National Market Concept, they like Moving forward, a national market concept, they like the market that don't have a big franchisee in place. You know, TRC continues to sit over past, uh, multiple sites, help the broker and tie surrounding franchisee from McHenry. Did that kind of get a chance to meet with, with, with that call, have it all coming up on recruitment franchise? They're just trying to find somebody to develop in, 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 in McHenry with, with specific brands that like the market, but just don't have somebody actively looking for someone there. So like I said, the deal kind of goes cold for a little bit there. National hospital concept, McHenry, this possibility for us looking for roughly eighteen hundreds, twenty-two hundred square feet with the tractor. This is some feedback we've gotten, I would say, in the past week or so. So I'm kind of hitting the ground running here, trying to get this national hospital concept, all the available sites that, that, that I think everybody would be really excited about this restaurant specifically. There's local Thai restaurants that are looking. Uh, they have, you know, roughly one location in the region, others consider opening another location. And we're kind of pushing them to make that second location be in McHenry. I think McHenry Plaza would work well for them just based on kind of what's available. We've passed that information on the will. And, and he's kind of been reaching out on his, his side as well. So trying to get that, you know, that local Thai restaurant to kind of take the next step. You know, they're looking to open that, that second location. Casual casual Mexican concept, Illinois has not been a major focus in the past, but things are changing. We're working on signing up new franchisees. You know, to hit the ground running when things are in place. TRC has been the best, keep McHenry on top of their list, kind of like I said earlier. You know, sites are kind of the name of the game. When you get a specific retailer or restaurant interested, because the first thing they're going to know is, okay, we like what we see data wise. We know we can be successful based on, you know, fifty or a hundred other locations having similar data sets. I always kind of give the comparison of, you know, CBS and Walgreens. They have, you know, hundreds of other locations, similar communities where, you know, Walgreens comes in, they open, and CBS says, well, Walgreens is going in. We know we can be successful there, whether that's in, you know, what's called Mississippi town, where I live, in Texas town, or home. You know, like Agnes and Mall in Chicago, it, it all works the same. So we're, we're saying on top of this, getting the whole of sites they need to kind of stay on top of their list. Natural spending concept, McHenry is in our development plan. However, we don't have franchisees to develop. This individual says they are looking at, at signing up for, for a small franchisee kind of industry currently. So I've kind of been checking in with them, you know, every so often. They're going to be wanting to have a driver who's kind of based on, you know, the product that they provide. It's kind of a buzz at this point. Then a natural casual sit-down restaurant, interested in more current, currently reviewed sites. Kind of been working with them for a while, you know, just got to find them that right site. And, you know, that's kind of all I have. I, I wanted to keep it behind your, like I said, I, I could have gone much more heavy into data, but for this specifically, I, I, I'll kind of get in the surface. You know, Aaron and I talked to Doug and George at, at ITF or at IML probably once and a half ago. We're deciding where we are right now. We haven't planned it to be fit yet, but unfortunately, kind of in, in, in our position, things kind of take less, take time to, you know, make deals happen, those type of things. But we want to give y'all enough base, let y'all know that, you know, we're kind of recruiting for y'all and putting y'all, you know, having y'all on the best minds. Passion for retail restaurants that we've had verified as we did for McHenry.
Great, thank you, Kyle, for the presentation. I'm going to go ahead and open it up for questions by council if they have any questions. We might have to repeat those questions too, so let us know, Kyle, if you don't hear it.
Yeah, you probably will need to. I had a difficulty hearing the individuals earlier, so.
Okay, all right.
I'll look forward to it.
Okay. Any questions by council? Oh, that was easy.
I'll, I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask one, Kyle. This is Derek, City Minister here. Where do you see, how about, how about retailers? You know, where do you, where do you guys see the retail market going? I mean, I have my own opinions, but you guys are nationwide. So where do you see the retail market going and the ability to attract retailers to sites, not only in McHenry, but any place?
Yeah, so are, are you talking clothing specifically or?
Just, just anything other than food retailers, let's say that.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll go ahead and tell you, it, it, it's food is really driving, you know, kind of the whole retail industry. We're, we're kind of seeing that throughout the country. You know, brick and mortar, a lot of people kind of consider things, you know, the retail apocalypse with Amazon coming in and, and, and taking up everything. And, you know, that's, that's really not the case. I could have, I could have put a lot of statistics in here, but, you know, we're seeing guys like Amazon open up brick and mortar sites throughout the country. You know, retail is, is clothing specifically is, is trying to kind of find that niche of, of really where they're going to stand moving forward. Especially with COVID, they're hit extremely hard and so was restaurant concepts as well. But, you know, kind of the data that we've seen back in some of, you know, the statistics for seeing nationwide, you know, we're going, we're going to see, you know, kind of the clothing brand take a step in the next year or so. And kind of really get back in these trends.
And I guess as a follow-up, I guess a two-part follow-up to that. I guess you just answered it. Do you see the clothing as being kind of the next, the next pop? How about retailers that, that go into large spaces, you know, vacant spaces? What do you see as kind of the trend that's been happening and the type of retailers or uses, I guess to be more general, that go into vacant companies, large spaces?
Yeah, so, you know, we're kind of seeing, you know, the larger big boxes kind of shrink in their format a little bit. So, you know, in the past, someone would go into, you know, a fifty thousand seat and that's just not the type of store they're opening anymore. They're, you know, think of, you know, TJX, TJX brands, for example, TJ Maxx, articles, those type concepts of the world. They're kind of moving towards junior box locations. So, you know, vacant seats that are fifty thousand feet, we're seeing a lot of people go in and putting a, a wall right down the middle of it and making it, you know, to twenty-five thousand foot spaces and it opens up your opportunities to a much larger pool of prospects that are, you know, expanding into that size space versus fifty thousand feet. So, you know, we're seeing, you know, TJ Maxx and, and, and those type brands, you know, expand right now. You know, just trying to find that niche of, of what's really going to work for them moving forward. But that's what we see in a lot of markets throughout the country right now.
And I guess finally, sorry to dominate these questions, but they're all on my mind as a past economic development person. But where do you see McHenry positioned, I guess, in terms of, you know, demographics, demographics overall that you identified? Where do you see us positioned to be able to take advantage of the next wave of, of commercial retail coming in?
No, so I'll go back. I'll go back to this slide here. And these numbers are extremely strong. So that population number is probably the most important thing that, that retailers and restaurants want to see. They want to see, okay, who is shopping in this specific market? You know, this number gets you in for, you know, kind of the next level restaurants and retail. So the more, the more casual sit-down concept, maybe the more regional concept that have, you know, two or three locations that will are a little next level. So, you know, I'm extremely confident in these numbers and, you know, they put y'all in a great situation for success moving forward. You know, we work in, in, in a lot of small communities where the opportunity might be, you know, a Wendy's or, you know, just maybe a McDonald's and those type of things. But, you know, this business, you know, takes, takes time to get retailers and restaurants, you know, on the ground. And, and, and like I said, these numbers kind of put y'all in, in a great position for, for success. And I think some of the feedback we've had, you know, showed that so far.
Hey, Kyle, this is Mayor Jett. My question, I have a question. With all of this, all the data that you have, what is it that we can do to be ready for the next, you know, developments that come into our area? What, what can we do as a municipality, as a community, to be ready for that?
Yeah, I think, I think y'all do a great job already. I, I don't know if there's one specific thing, I'll tell you, George and Doug do a great job. We have five weekly updates and, and, you know, the, the week we don't have a call, oftentimes there's going to be, you know, an email saying, hey, take a look at this site. It's on the market, those type of things, you know. I think the science part is, is, is really the most important because, you know, the more sites we send out that are fit, you know, higher the rate of a retailer restaurant, you know, liking that site and ultimately putting comfort down or, or those type of things. So like I said, George and Doug have done, you know, a great job, you know, helping us do our job in marketing. But, you know, I think y'all are doing, you know, a great job as municipality.
There you go.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Outside of the food industry, if we're talking just, if we're talking retail, how many of your companies that you see out there nationalized that actually are expanding any other facilities outside of those that are marketing on the internet? Did you get that?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm here.
Okay, so I, I think the question was outside of the restaurant, outside of the restaurants, what, what type of non-restaurant retail do you see expanding? Is that accurate, Andy?
Yeah, give us like about a sample, maybe the top five.
Yeah, like for example, the non-restaurant retail that are expanding.
Yeah, so, you know, shockingly, we're starting to see some entertainment venues start to do some expansion in, in, in the past few months coming out of COVID, which is, which is kind of shocking for us, but it would be, you know, this soon. So entertainment's kind of one that, you know, that jumps off the page. And I don't think we're far off from, from seeing the clothing retailers, you know, really kind of with the pedal to the metal, we're going to be at. ITF, in, in Vegas, they've kind of re-granded the recon. So I believe it's, it's here we go, that we're going to be there in December, marketing McHenry. And, and from what we've seen, there's going to be, you know, a lot of clothing retailers there that we're going to talk to and just say, you know, what are y'all, you know, what y'all expect to want to go to the next three years now that, you know, you know, we're kind of coming out of the COVID stuff and, you know, people are looking to expand. So one that kind of jumps off is, is the entertainment, which I think would be, you know, kind of huge for McHenry. As, as well as, like I said, I think clothing is kind of right there naturally, which, which should be, you know, full year in the next few months.
And what about, you know, we talked about what he's saying is as far as clothing. And yes, that is a big part of the non-food industry. But what about like, let's say, furniture stores, home improvement type, smaller home improvement type? We're not talking the construction tree end of it as much as, let's say, places that sell shelving and, and modernistic type home products.
Yeah, so I'll, so I'll, Kyle, a little about home, maybe not a home improvement in terms of building, but home improvement in terms of decor type stores.
Yeah, so I, I think I heard him mention grocery stores as well.
No, I mean, he didn't, but that's okay. I think it was, it was focused on home improvement.
Okay, sorry about that. Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, there's some home improvement stores definitely doing some expanding. I mentioned, you know, Tractor Supply on there. Yeah, we're not seeing, you know, Dolos and, and Home Depot moving a ton of their kind of flagship stores. Like you would say, they're massive stores. We're kind of seeing them going in a little bit smaller spaces. Like I said, you know, the TJX brands of, of the world are doing, they did extremely well during COVID. A lot of people sitting around, you know, then this, I know they lost, I, I put this on Project All for three years. I've got a lot of time, Kyle, just go ahead and do it. A lot of these home improvement stores we looked at were, you know, uh, you know, sixty, seventy percent on visits based on the year before. So I don't think there's a big opportunity for maybe kind of a larger concept. But, you know, I think we could kind of dividend, kind of look at some more, you know, some smaller concepts.
I mean, we are, we are getting the Home Goods fund worked on for quite a while. Are there other, are there other retailers like that that, that would be interested in the market or that are expanding? Forget the interest in the market, but that you see expanding across the nation?
Yeah, um, you know, like I said, you know, the TJX brands, those are kind of more, you know, similar, kind of similar to Home Goods, would, would be a nice play off of that. You know, they are expanding, we just got to, you know, we would ultimately have to find them, you know, the perfect space. And, you know, we're aware that Home Goods store coming in and that's going to be a huge asset to the market. And, you know, a lot of these retailers and restaurants, kind of like I said, what, what CBS and Walgreens do is, is they like cluster around specific stores. And Home Goods is one of those where, you know, somebody might look and say, okay, well, Home Goods is locating, you know, there's probably an opportunity for us as well. So we, we kind of already put that in our database. And, and, and when that store opens, going to kind of use that as, as a marketing tool for kind of some similar, some similar type concepts.
There you go.
So, Kyle, I'm not sure you can hear me. Would you say that food is your number one prospect at the moment? And it sounded like entertainment was number two. If it's not, what is the number two? What is following the trend right behind food? Did you hear that, Kyle?
Yeah, so, you know, food is, is, is definitely our number one just because that's what, that's what's been changing most rapidly anywhere throughout the country. You know, number two, I mean, we've, we've kind of talked to, you know, the Tractor Supply of the world and, and those types. We haven't done, you know, a ton of entertainment outreach. Like I said, they're kind of just now starting to expand. But, you know, it's been heavily, heavily restaurant-focused so far, just because that's kind of what the market just provides in McHenry as well as, you know, all of McHenry.
So Kyle, I'm, I'm not meaning to put you on the spot, but if you were to look at the US as a whole, is there a number two player that is on your radar?
Of the number two concept?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, let's, let's, let's say, I mean, I, I can go ahead, I can pull up our, our, our full recruitment list. I would say probably kind of on a person-based front base, say, you know, some recruitment could kind of be our number two, Tractor Supply is my player.
Thank you. Another question I've got. Is there any thought on what's going on as far as Amazon going into brick and mortar?
So Amazon into brick and mortar?
So Amazon into brick and mortar, uh, what's, what's your take on that, Kyle?
Yeah, so I mean, those guys are, they can open a, a brick and mortar store in McHenry, you know? You know, they're not just because they're looking at, you know, water, like Seattle and these those type things. But, you know, those guys control so much, um, that it's always comforting for us to see them, you know, opening up their bookstores, opening up their, you know, small little grocery store concepts and things like that. Because, you know, no matter what you hear, you know, people still like go in stores and, you know, trying something on holding a tangible object. So when, when we see Amazon opening a brick and mortar location, that's extremely comforting for us to see.
No, go ahead. Hi Kyle.
Thank you.
Uh, you touched on it, uh, where these, uh, big box stores are going out. And, uh, what's your experience as far as getting owners to make them into like subdivided spaces for small businesses?
Yeah, so are you talking about like, you know, fifty square or a fifty thousand square foot spot? Putting a, a wall down the middle of it or opening up two?
Yeah, or a couple walls, you know, just.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's kind of case by case, it's based on the property owner. Um, and a lot of times we have those conversations with them and say, look, you know, this is what we're seeing all over the country and, and oftentimes it helps to get, you know, outside, um, information from a company like us rather than, you know, somebody else. Um, all this, I mean, it's, it's, it's going to cost some money obviously, but it just opens you up to, to a ton more concepts that, that would fit that space. Um, so it, it's kind of just a coaching thing that goes in, having those conversations, getting on the phone, getting on Zoom and those type things. And, 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 you know, just talking to property owner through it and, and, you know, on our end saying to, um, TJ Maxx or, or whoever it is, hey, you know, here's a location, um, you know, there's a possibility that, um, the owner of the property would put a wall down the middle and take a fifty thousand square foot spot, maybe twenty-five thousand square foot spot. Would y'all be interested in that? Here's the draft account in the area, here's a cell phone study on this specific center, um, you know, here's your trade area numbers and those type things. So, you know, it goes with us, marketing on our end, getting somebody interested, um, on the front end and then also working with the property owner. Like I said, it's a case by case basis, some are, are my team here to work with, obviously, and others.
Yeah, but another thing I've got here is, uh, what about the concept of, uh, uh, flea markets, that type of, uh, retail, uh, as well as, uh, you know, uh, discounting started back in the late fifties, uh, especially got strong in the, the mid-sixties. And where you found a lot of companies expanding at that time were licensee departments within each store. So when you went to Tops or whatever discount stores at the time, you never realized that, uh, there were different companies within the, uh, threshold of the big box. And is that something viable, uh, going on anywhere that, uh, some of these big boxes that are sitting in the, uh, are being filled in with that type of concept?
Yeah, I mean, we're seeing that. I, I don't always think it's the highest and best use. Um, you know, obviously it, it, it gets people in there. Um, oftentimes it's more headache than anything for the landlord, just kind of depending on what type of business businesses are setting up in there. I've, I've seen that be, you know, very successful and then oftentimes, you know, individuals will, will pay their, um, you know, their booth fee and, and those type things. Um, you know, obviously, as, as we can just tell the y'all, wherever you see a, or, um, set in stone retailer in there, um, it would, you know, obviously there will hire sales and those type things. But, you know, as a company, we're not extremely high on those, um, you know, kind of similar to call centers, um, where they get, you know, people with call centers and in, in, in these big box locations transform it on into stores, facilities and those type things. And as a company, we're not extremely, um, high on those. Um, but, you know, sometimes that's, that's, that's kind of what things are going to. And like I said, you got a fifty thousand square foot space and you have, you know, one or two, three, four brands that, you know, could sit there and, you know, they all say no. And then you've got a, you know, you've got that boss that's there looking for something to do with it. So, um, like I said, over, we're, we're, we're big fans of, of kind of splitting up that space a little bit there and, um, getting the most, most bang for your buck.
All right, well, thank you, Kyle, for your time. And, uh, Doug, Dorky, I appreciate you working with them. I know I was someone I met at I T S D, uh, I mean, three years ago, I want to say, prior to COVID. But, uh, it obviously worked out, uh, to our benefit and hopefully it's been blacked out some of these bigger retailers. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yeah, me and, uh, Dorky, so I'll, I'll, I'll go tomorrow after, thank y'all again and, and y'all for your rest of the night.
Thank you, you too. Okay, uh, moving on to the consent agenda, uh, item six eight through six G. Is there any items for separate consideration by council?
Alderman? I have a separate consideration, but just a, a comment, uh, from the November first council meeting minutes. I didn't see anything about, uh, uh, in the question being asked, uh, or, um, sorry, I'm calling for a vote. And, uh, I think that's important, that, that, that would have been in there. If we can make that correction, uh, maybe review the, the tapes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and check your, thank you. Any other items for separate consideration? See none? I am looking for a motion to approve six A through six G. Alderman Sankey?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda from six A through six G as presented.
Thank you. Alderman McClatchy?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion any details? Please hold on.
Alderman Sankey?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Schratt?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes. Uh, thank council, next item on the agenda, seven A is a consideration of a sign variance with a staff recommendation for denial for one additional wall sign at Kojak's Restaurant located at thirty-one oh two Route one twenty. Director Palerick?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, staff received a signed variance request from Kojak's at thirty-one oh two Route one twenty. Um, applicants seeking a variance for two, a lot of one additional wall sign. They are allowed two, they're looking at a third. Uh, they are under the total square footage allowed, but obviously they are above the total signs allowed, which is two. So, um, staff looked at the overall site. Uh, they do have a video board, we took that into consideration that they are allowed to change their advertising outside all the time. So, um, did you feel that, uh, they didn't abide by number three and the signed variance, uh, requirements, which is shall not give the property owner a business unfair advantage over certain of the business. Uh, and so staff is recommending denial. If city council does disagree with staff, there's ordinance, uh, attached. That would, uh, provide a, a, uh, approval for them this evening.
Thank you. And Russ? Uh, I am looking for a motion and a second, uh, for item seven A as presented. Alderman Hardy?
I'll make the motion for seven A.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Sankey?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Discussion by council. Alderman, uh, go ahead.
All I want to say is, is, uh, and I understand we have these, uh, sign ordinances, uh, that were tightened up years and years ago, uh, with the idea that, um, you could apply for variance and there were times when, uh, the council might decide that, uh, it was appropriate. Uh, I can recall that, uh, we really gave Chase Bank, uh, a heck of a, a problem with one extra sign, uh, years and years ago when it developed above, uh, Oak and, uh, one twenty there. And all they were doing was putting what their normal, uh, signage was for, uh, all their banks everywhere. The wings, uh, that, that he's looking at, uh, just basically coincide with the rest of the other sides. It's not gaudy, it's, uh, very simple. And I really don't have a problem with it if it was, uh, within this, uh, range of, uh, what he goes as far as people.
Thank you. Any other council discussion on this item? Opening up for public input, is there anyone in the public that would like to make public comment regarding this item? See none? Uh, going back to council, last opportunity for discussion for item seven A.
So this is an odd motion. Are we clear this is a motion to deny? This is an odd thing to do, make sure you don't be voting on these.
So just to clarify, David, the yes vote is, that is?
The deny.
Deny. Right, but this call, no?
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Sankey?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
No.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Schratt?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes. Thank you, council, it is denied. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, uh, the discussion item, which has been taken off the agenda this evening. Uh, staff reports, is there any other staff reports to add to this next meeting?
So just a reminder that the city's Christmas activities will be this weekend. So we'll have the, uh, the lighting of the lights at Met Park, Met Park at five P.M. On Saturday, there'll be, uh, the team redoing a lot of things, uh, in terms of like living windows that'll, that'll follow that. You can walk around, they'll have, uh, a number of businesses participating in that as well as, um, some of the local bars and restaurants will have some specials. And then on Sunday will be the Toys for Tots parade. So that, uh, the route for the Toys for Tots parade this year will be, uh, the lineup will be on Canyon Avenue. And then it'll be Green Street to Pearl Street, uh, east on Pearl Street to Riverside Drive. And then Riverside Drive, uh, north to Broad, we'll, we'll circle back around and wind up back at, uh, Veterans Memorial Park. So that's Sunday, Sunday at one.
Thank you, go, appreciate it. Um, I have no other mayor reports, uh, this evening, any city council comments?
Alderman? Yes, uh, as of last, uh, meeting, uh, when we talked about, uh, uh, calling a question, there are specific rules in Robert's rules. When I wasn't kidding when I said I had a thick book. Uh, when someone calls a question, it has to be voted on by the entire council to end the discussions. We don't just automatically start calling roll. Uh, things that I found in there, uh, Attorney McCardo, we have had this discussion, uh, years back with another alderman that called the question and you didn't have a book with you. Uh, according to what this, these, uh, rules are, is the fact that the chairman is supposed to have a copy of the rules for order as far as how a meeting is supposed to be run. And he is supposed to have it with him at all times, in other words, whether it's his desk or whatever. So that it's, uh, available.
Nope.
All I'm saying is, is the last time, or the first time this came up years back, uh, we didn't have a book with us here at the meeting. Uh, I would suggest that we do have one of these books, uh, so that when these type of procedural, uh, questions come up, that we would be able to, uh, look at that right away and, uh, make that decision. Uh, I was wondering, uh, considering this was a, uh, a question as far as, uh, procedurals last, uh, meeting, uh, did we happen to look at the Robert's rules to get a, uh, because evidently one alderman is looking at it one way, it says he's read it, one way I'm looking at it and seeing that it's supposed to be read a different way. And we need to, for the future, look at how that's going to be handled because we are supposed to be following Robert's rules as far as these meetings. And, uh, that's all I'm asking is, is so that there is clarification as far as, uh, how we're going to proceed it.
So are you donating that book?
No, I'm not donating the book. And then you said you didn't, years ago, I, and I, I distinctly remember you said that you didn't bring your book. So in other words, you do have a book.
I bring it off the shelf, I dust it off. When councils don't get along.
Oh, okay.
We don't follow procedure quite often. Motions to reconsider, changing my motion, changing the second. We do things pretty informally. I can do them formally, but if everyone's going in the same direction, there's no need to pull the book. If, if you're having a disagreement that's giving everybody a stomach ache, then we'll pull the book and we'll follow the rules. But nobody turned to me and asked me what the rule was and that's how I react. So, I mean, you don't want to be, we're, we're not parliament, does it close by parliament? It's not, it's not Congress. We get along with rules that we follow. If the mayor wants me and if the council wants me to pull the rule and follow it, I can be the parliamentarian. I just, whatever you people want is a majority, that's what the bottom line.
No, it, we have, we have an ordinance that states that we follow the Robert's rules.
So it is.
If we have to redo our ruling, the rules, then that's what we should do. Well, one way or the other, you know, it's the old, uh, either you follow your rules or you don't, you know? If you're not going to follow your rules, then you should change it. Then we should change it.
Well?
Alderman Schratt, go ahead.
Alderman, I can appreciate you bringing your book lines in my vehicle as well. And I did review it again after our meeting as well. And so calling the question according to what I've read states that you need a two-third majority. No one on this council said anything about not calling that question. So without anyone negating the fact that I called the question, I think it stood and it still would stand today. Again, we have Attorney McCardo to make that decision for the next time. But also in those Robert rules, it says that you have an opportunity to speak twice on a motion on the floor. So if we're going to follow the rules, then I guess we should follow the rules. There's a time limit and you're only allowed to speak twice on a matter that's on the floor. So if you'd like to call the rules, let's call the rules like they are and we'll just go ahead and proceed forward like that. We'll look at the ordinance and see what the time limit's been set by city council in the past. And we'll make sure that that's how we follow those rules moving forward. If we need to make those changes, then maybe we do. So I think we're all on agreement that we want to move forward and we want to make things right. I'm happy to do that for you as well.
That's all, all I'm, I'm saying is, is, uh, it just doesn't seem right that, uh, if there's discussion on the floor that any alderman could just stop all the discussion and, and take a vote just by calling it. And that's, that becomes a, a real stickler for me because of the fact that, uh, everybody should be able to bring out everything that they have to say and it's during discussion. Uh, I've seen, uh, even way before I was on the council, that all of a sudden other things pop up, that other questions come up from council. And, uh, during the discussion, something, somebody says something and somebody calls a question and then this, other aldermen don't get to ask those questions. So that's why I, I think it's a very important rule as we look at it. And that's all I've got.
All right. Okay. All right, so, um, after talking to David McCardo, we're going to go ahead and, if there's a call, just call the question. We'll get a second for call the question and we'll go ahead and, uh, run the whole call.
Sure.
As, as a move forward.
Sure, sure.
You agree with that?
That's fine for me, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any other city council comments?
I'll take, go ahead. Um, I'll call to, uh, Jordan B.
Oh.
There's a motion by Alderman McClatchy. Second by Alderman Schratt.
Okay. Good call, we'll all say.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Sankey?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Schratt?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.